This time, if you will all stand with me and we'll give a pledge allegiance to our flag, and I'll give the invocation after the pledge.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you pray with me, please? Our dear gracious and heavenly Father, ruler of all, maker of all, we come to you as humbly as we possibly can to ask your guidance and direction as we make decisions that affect so many people. We pray that our actions and our words will be pleasing to you, dear Lord. Bless the families that are here. Keep them safe and well in your loving arms. In Jesus' name, amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the robe, please?
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Renninger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
We will call the City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 28, 2011, to order at 6:03 PM. The character trait of this month is dependability, keeping my word even if it means unexpected sacrifice. Gentlemen, you should have received copies of the minutes from the public hearing and the City Council meeting from October 4, 2011. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve these minutes at this time. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Motion's been made by Councilman Argo to approve the minutes as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Striplin. Is there any comments, questions, or additions or deletions to the minutes? Although it's in favor of approving the minutes as presented, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? I see none. The minutes are officially approved. At this time, we will open the floor up for comments from persons present regarding agenda items only. There will be a time at the end of the agenda for anyone present to address the Council on any item of business, but right now, it's just pertaining to the agenda items only. Yes, ma'am. Come forward and give us your name and address and state your business, please.
Hi, my name is Laura Pate, L-A-U-R-A, P-A-T-E. My address?
Your address.
1002 Upper Kingston Road, Prattville, Alabama, 36067.
All right.
And I represent Spinner.
Okay.
Gentlemen, you're all familiar with Spinners. Some of your mamas were in Spinners. How's that? As you may already know, we have an arts and craft show this weekend, and I'm not here just to make sure you're all coming, but I wanted to remind you all that over the years that we've been doing this, we generally raise a little over $10,000 each year that we donate back into the community. And of course, Spinners themselves donate a little over 3,000 hours a year to local charities in the greater area. And this year, we understand that rules change, and unfortunately, we found out a little late, and so we're begging today, if you all would bear with us for the arts and craft show this weekend, to help us, to help our community, to fundraise money, to help display local artisans, and to also help promote the great city of Prattville. And I think on the agenda, it talks about maybe helping the police to help with the run, and maybe sanitation, who do such a great job for us. So hopefully, you'll be with us, and if not, you can just send money. Home to Spinner this weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Pate. I'm guessing that you are addressing Resolution Number Four, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to address the Council on an agenda item tonight? Anything that's on the agenda tonight? Okay, we'll move into the Mayor's report. Mayor, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, sir. One of the things I was going to talk about also was Resolution Number Four, and to ask that you guys do approve that, also, we do need to make an amendment on that also, because there are some other events that we do need to go ahead and fund through that same venue, but because we're operating up underneath emergency resolution, we do need to amend that before we pass it if the Council sees fit. But yeah, I was going to talk about the Spinners and what kind of great services that they provide to the city and how much they have pretty much been a mainstay for the city on all the events and all the charitable organizations that they contribute to, and how they are just a part of Prattville. And I definitely will be seeing you guys this weekend, and whether it be rain or shine, cold or hot, whatever, I definitely will be there and look forward to it. But anyway, with that said, I'm going to go back to the initial of my report, and that's going to be talking about a couple of new faces that you see out here tonight already. Over here in our little booth over here in the corner number one, we got Jamie Ferrari McClellan, thank you. She just recently married, so she's still a newlywed, but she's going to be with approval of the Council, our Assistant City Clerk, and so she can help us move through these meetings. Also, over here to my left in corner number two, I guess so to speak, Paula Barlow. She's, you know, recently, we lost Stephanie Sutherland from City Clerk, and Jamie Moncrief from the Mayor's Office, and so Paula is taking over in that position at this time, and I look forward to working closely with both of them for a long period of time, I hope. But anyway, moving right on along, just reminding everybody that October 28 is Friday night. We do have our candy walk in a movie right here strictly behind City Hall, and hope that everybody can show up and have a good time. It's going to be a little scary movie, but not too much, and if anybody wants to come out, I think you'll see quite a few of your neighbors and your friends, and I think little events like that is what really makes Prattville. Also, I want to talk about how our Yellow Dot program got kicked off today, and if everybody has not really checked into our Yellow Dot program, please get on our city website and investigate on it, and you'll see that it'd be very worthwhile for your family, and please enroll your family and yourself into it, and any other relatives or friends that you might have, because it can be a lifesaver. It's designed that whenever the first responders get to a scene, if they see the yellow dot on the back of a motorcycle tag, because it seems like our motorcycles have gotten overlooked on this a lot, but even the motorcycle tag or the back glass of a window, they'll know to go look for vital information, contact numbers, and so forth. But if you could investigate in that and hopefully participate in that. Fire Department, Station Number Three, right up around Walmart, is where, one area that you can sign up, and also our Police Department. One other item I want to bring up about is Governor Bentley's Executive Order Number 24. He ordered synthetic THC, also known as spice, be taken off the streets, and the Police Department, after some training from the state on that, they were able to pull roughly 2,500 grams plus off of the streets, which comes out to be a street value of $25,000. If you're not all that familiar with spice, it's, there's been quite a few injuries, deaths, and from some of our, I guess, our youngsters who have decided they're going to experiment with a synthetic THC drug, and it has been very detrimental, and I do applaud Governor Bentley for stepping out there and getting this off of the streets. Another item, too, I want to talk about today was also Medline. Everybody sitting up here, I'm certain, is aware of Medline. They had their grand opening today, the ribbon cutting, and with, I know the Council worked very hardly, very hard on that to get it here to Prattville, and it's a feather in the cap of the Council and the Mayor, and has brought approximately 45 new jobs to Prattville, and it's a very successful kickoff on that. I talked previously about Resolution Number Four, need to amend that, so that way we can have the Spinners Park Run and also other events, and that dollar amount, if the Council sees fits, really needs to be doubled, because we do have some football activities and other things. There again, because of our being under a continuous resolution, we need to have prior approval of that. Another thing I'm going to go ahead and talk about is the Mayor's salary. Right now, at this time, the Mayor's salary is approximately $90,000 with a $12,000 car allowance. I know that once a salary is set, it's set for the quadrenium, and we're getting real close to the point to where the salary needs to be, if it's going to be adjusted, it has to be adjusted, and I'm asking the Council to entertain the idea of reducing that amount. Back when it was voted on, it went from $70,000 to $90,000, and if the Council sees fits, to either take it back to its original amount or something in between. And the people who, the Council members who were on board at the time, I made an amendment to reduce that amount of $90,000 down to $80,000. So the Council will entertain that idea, because whenever I signed up to run in the race for Councilmember, I didn't know what the, I did not know what that position paid. I didn't run for the money, and I don't really believe anybody sitting up here ran for the dollar amount. I think they ran to give back to the community, and that's what my thoughts were, and that's also my thoughts with this Mayor's position. I'm not here for the dollar amount, I'm here for the community. Even at $90,000, if I tallied up all the time that I put in at this job, I would not be making minimum wage, but that's fine. I knew roughly what the job was, I've enjoyed the job, and I've just, especially on the economic times that we are right now, I just think that it'd be prudent to go ahead and lower it, and if nothing else, there's a very good possibility it might save one job. And if me having that salary lowered saves one job, one employee's job out there, I'm willing to take that sacrifice if I happen to be elected as Mayor for the next term. But I hope the Council will consider that. One other thing I want to go ahead and bring up also is that Military Appreciation Week is coming up next month, November 6 through the 12th. Gentlemen, military is one reason Prattville's weathered this economic storm that the whole country's found itself in. I know that Prattville truly appreciates our local military. Please remember them in your prayers, and I will remind you guys next month when, exactly what the date is again. But we have signed a resolution, along with some other River Region Mayors, to proclaim it Military Appreciation Week, but please keep them in their prayer for everything that they do for us. I believe also that there's going to be a resolution brought from the floor about a bridge loan. This is about the bond payment, it's due on November 3. This can be held over until our November 1 meeting, so whatever the Council sees fit on that. At this point in time, we're still waiting on some revenues to come in. There is one single revenue source that we've been waiting on, this is approximately $500,000 that we have not received as of yet. And so whereas we have, I've been preaching all along that our bond or our bridge loan payment would be approximately $1.5 million, there is a possibility that it might have to be $2 million, but we do have the revenues coming in, and if we do proceed with this on the, for the November 1 meeting, I see no problems with us meeting the obligations of this. So if you guys can see forward to bringing that up from the floor tonight, or if not, we can actually act on it at our November 1 meeting, whatever the Council decides on that. In closing, I also went to the State Capitol today, sat in on the redistricting comments about District 88. Councilmember Bowles was there. I saw Commissioner Jay Thompson, also Judge, I've forgotten Judge's name now, Booth. Judge Booth was there also, and just a few other Prattville people there. But anyway, I did get up and speak before the committee there, asking them to keep Prattville all in one district and not split it up into two different ones, that I thought that that was not only the best for Prattville, but also best for the River Region. And that was pretty much about the extent of my day today. That's all I have to report, Council President.
Any questions for the Mayor? Councilman Bowes?
A couple. First of all, I really appreciate you showing up today, and enjoyed speaking in front of the committee also, and I went in front of the committee as a business owner, not as a politician. I gave them the, our business is located in Elmore County side, in the district. I'm a lifelong resident of Otawa County, and that's the way I was presenting it. We need one person representing us. I have Representative Beckman in my cellphone, he answers every time I call him, and as a business owner, I appreciate that, and I would like to keep it that way. Did have a good conversation with Senator Taylor for like 30 minutes on the way back in, and he's working very hard to try to help us in this situation. Two, I like the idea of reducing the salary back where it was before the hefty pay raise was instated. I would like to see us go one step further and take the council pay from $17,500 to $12,000 a year. That'll be $1,000 a month. We have taken and taken and taken from our employees, we have taken from our citizens. This is our chance to give back and take from ourselves. So I'll be asking, when this comes up, I'll have a resolution at the same time to pull our salaries back down also. Third, thank you for being at Medline today. I could not make it, but I appreciate all the work you're doing. Thank you.
Well, they had an extremely good lunch, so I ate some for you and some of the other Councilmembers who could not be there.
Anything further from the Mayor? I do have a couple of questions, Mayor. First of all, you said that we're going to need to amend Resolution Four for, to authorize overtime pay.
Yes, sir.
I know that you're aware that that requires a written amendment, and although you and I casually conversed about the possibility of increasing that, I haven't seen anything in writing. So if you want an amendment on this, I would suggest that you get with our attorney while we're working through the agenda and get something in writing stating what amount you want it amended to.
Yes, sir.
If that's what you want.
That's what we need.
Okay.
Need, needed to be the key word.
What I need is something in writing stating what amendments need to be made. Please, sir.
I'll take care of it.
All right. And the rules will need to be suspended before we can act on that, gentlemen. I'm sure that you're aware of that, but... Anything else for the Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Oh, Councilman Miller?
On the loan for the bond payment, you mentioned that we were possibly expecting additional revenue of a half million dollars?
$500,000, yes, sir.
And the source of that?
I'd rather tell you after this.
Okay, and so it's sort of like there's that unknown piece of information that would determine the final amount that we're going to ask to borrow?
Yes, sir.
So if we pass this tonight, then we may have to come back and increase the amount?
I'd really ask that you not even pass it tonight, just if you do introduce it tonight, and then that way, it would automatically hold over for two weeks unless somebody, well, you know the rules, unless somebody suspended the rules. But best interest of the city, I think, would be to hold it until our November 1 meeting.
So introduce and hold contingent on whether or not this other comes through, and that would determine the final amount of when we ultimately pass it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure I had all the sequence of those plans in my mind. Thank you.
Any other questions, the Mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. If it's okay, I might just stand up here and listen to Doug. I can hear Doug better from here than over my cubbyhole.
Sure, he's up, he's next up to bat, as they say. Report on the status of the city finances, Mr. Mosley.
Okay, I provided you gentlemen with the finance information that we provide every month. The first sheet is the revenue sheet. You'll see that on the percentage of budget, we're running really, really close to 100% if not over on just about everything. One thing of note is we do have one more month that's going to be added to this that'll go into the fiscal year 2011 numbers, because they were collected by the vendors in September and therefore due to the city then. So that will become an accounts receivable on our books and get added to our revenue. You'll see that year-to-date difference, we are $2.7 million up from last year. If you take out the 1% increase that's been added in, we are still up $977,000 or 3.09%. So in this economy, I think that's pretty good, to be up at all. If you take the next sheet, that is our expense sheet, broken down by department. Most every departments that we've gone over before has the same overages, but I'll go over them again just as a summary since it is September. Now, these numbers may change slightly due to accruals and stuff like that that come in during the audit, but this should be fairly close to how they end up. You'll see in the Executive Department, salaries and benefits are over 100%. That is due to the reorganization, moving the webmaster into that department, and therefore her salary and benefits. The operations section is over 100%. That's due to the insurance and the difference in the car allowance. You'll notice in Finance Department, it is over, the operations line item is over 100%. That is due to the audit costs, and as you know, we have renegotiated that cost to bring that down. On the City Clerk's Department, you will notice the operations line item is over 100%. That is due to insurance cost, liability insurance cost. On the HR Department, you'll notice they're slightly over on their benefits. That is due to the fact that right now, the unemployment expense that the city pays is listed as a benefit under HR. I'll be moving that out this next year so that it doesn't cloud that issue. Under judicial, you will notice that operations is over 100%. That's due to how the difference in how the jail contract expense is being allocated between the budget and the actual financial statements. In the IT Department, you'll notice that their operations are over 100%. That's primarily due to telephone costs. That was not adequately budgeted in this previous fiscal year. That has been corrected, though. Vehicle Maintenance Department, the operations line item is a little bit over 100%, but you will notice they're down $304,000 from last year, which is significant. Engineering costs, salaries and benefits are over 100%. That again is due to the reorganization. Plane Department's operations is a little bit over 100%. That is due to utility costs being higher than expected. Sanitation Department's, their operations line item is a little bit over 100%, that's due to fuel costs going up. Same situation with the Police Department. That is going to be all of them. Obviously, the debt service line item is over budget due to the bridge loans being in there, not being budgeted, and also the use of our line of credit. One thing of note, on the expense bottom line, you'll notice, if you look at the total, you see year-to-date difference is $3,151,000 less. What I actually did was I took out the debt service, because in the 2010 fiscal year, we had, we refunded a couple of bonds, and it kind of clouds the issue with us using the line of credit and everything else. If you take that out, just looking at pure operations, we have spent $9.97 million less this year than last year, which is significant. And I think that's part of the reason that we're starting to turn the ship. By no means are we out of the woods by far. We've got a long way to go, but I think that we've kind of turned the ship and moved it back in the right direction. I also included a couple of other reports this month, just as a, for information for you. One of those is due to 1% sales tax account. This shows where every dollar of the sales extra, 1 penny sales tax went. As you'll see, we've actually either set aside or spent on debt service $173,000 more than we actually received from the 1 penny sales tax. I also provided a very simple and plain fund balance sheet at the back. This shows the unreserved fund balance at the 9/30/2010. That's from this past year's financial statements, negative $2.3 million. I included the total cash in, which is $38 million, and the total cash out, which is $37 million. That brings the unreserved fund balance to negative, just over negative $1 million. So we have cut that significantly. And it's, the fund balance is a very good indication of where we stand. Until that's positive, we're going to be behind. That doesn't mean that we're, once it's positive, we're going to be out of debt and everything's rosy, but it does mean that we're starting to catch back up, and that turning closer to positive is a clear indication of that. We're not still going backwards, we're actually moving in the right direction. Also, I wanted to provide you a little bit of information. I didn't include this report, but it's just kind of a little FYI. This last year, at 9/30/2010, our accounts payable balance on the financial statements was $3.3 million, and that does not include what we owed to the Group Health Insurance Fund. That includes community initiatives and all vendor payments that were due at that time. As of 9/30, that balance right now is $1.5 million, so we've cut that in half. It's another indication that we're starting to catch back up. Does not mean that we're out of the woods by any stretch of the imagination, but does mean that we're on the right track.
Any questions for Mr. Mosley? Councilman Bowes?
You know, I love these reports, and I have to comment, but when you said that we had spent $9.7 million, I felt, I'm a Baptist, and I almost said amen to that one. I really want to stand up and clap. The other thing I want to point out to make sure that everybody understands is when he was saying we were a little over 100%, it sounded to me, sitting up here, you were saying we are 100% over.
No, we're over, a little bit over full budget.
We were 6% over budget, we were 12% over.
Correct.
Not 100% over.
Correct.
Because what I was hearing, I was reading, so I knew what you were saying, but what I was hearing, I was hearing different than what I was reading, so I wanted to clarify that to the public. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Mosley? Thank you, sir. We'll move into the reports from Council on Special Committees. Councilman Striplin?
No reports.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. The Sanitation and Wastewater Committee. We were notified this afternoon that Governor Mills and Kay Wood has completed their assessment of the wastewater department, and Jackson Thornton is nearly completed with its assessment of our rate structure for wastewater fees. We will have a committee meeting next week to finalize that information, and look forward to bringing you a full report at our first meeting in November. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Miller?
Now, I understand that from Chief Brown that David is working on our contract for the ambulance relationship with the county, and as soon as that's completed, I'll be convening a fire committee meeting to review that and subsequently hand it off to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Bowes?
No, sir.
Councilman Fink?
No, sir.
The Finance Committee will meet Thursday night, 5:30, here in City Hall in the conference room. The express purpose for the Finance Committee meeting is to discuss possible revisions to the proposed budget for 2011, 2012. It is open to the public. You may come, you may listen, you may observe, but we will not take public comments. It is a working meeting for the Finance Committee. This Thursday night, 5:30 PM, which is October 20, at City Hall. We'll move into our... We'll move into our agenda now. Agenda number, excuse me, resolution number one is to ratify the promotion to assistant city clerk and authorize the appointment of Jamie F. McClellan to interim city clerk. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville city clerk Stephanie J. Sutherland resigned effective October 14th, 2011, and whereas the city council of the City of Prattville is in immediate need to fill the position of the assistant to the city clerk. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that the human resources department has completed the hiring process for an assistant to the city clerk. This position has been filled effective October 11, 2011. Be it further resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that Jamie F. McClellan is hereby appointed as interim city clerk for a period not to exceed 60 days at a pay grade 405-3, and the funds are to be paid from the general fund. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fink has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boes. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand, please. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Congratulations, Jamie. We're proud to have you with us. Resolution number two is to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
To declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance, ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance. 2707 Winfrey Drive, 2711 Winfrey Drive, 2506 Wingate Drive, 2528 Wingate Drive. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the city council following their removal. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion about this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? I see none. Resolution is adopted, 7-0. Next item is an ordinance to surplus various Prattville Police Department equipment and vehicles and to authorize the disposal of one frequency-sensitive item at the firing range. Mr. Wood, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Be it ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the item listed below hereby declare surplus of the Prattville Police Department and ought to be removed from the inventory of said department. One, 1997 Ford Mustang, eight-cylinder engine, green in color. Two, 2004 Dodge Intrepid, six-cylinder engine, black in color. Three, 1997 Ford Explorer, eight-cylinder engine, gold in color. Four, 2005 Pontiac Grand M, six-cylinder engine, silver in color. Five, Panasonic VHS recorder. Six, Panasonic VHS recorder. Seven, Panasonic monitors. Eight, Philips 12-inch television. Nine, Panasonic disc reader. Ten, RCA VCR. Eleven, Loirex VCR. Twelve, Brother typewriter. Thirteen, Brother typewriter. Fourteen, Startron night vision. Fifteen, groundhog video system. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the matter to sell said inventory through GovDeals.com. Be it further ordained that the item listed below is hereby declared surplus of the police department, but its frequency system will be destroyed and burned at the police department firing range. LEA four-channel receiver. Mr. Chair, I so move.
This ordinance has been moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Fink. Mr. Chair. Councilman Argo?
I make a motion, we suspend the rules on ordinance number three.
Councilman Argo has moved to suspend the rules on ordinance number three. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand, please. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing no opposition, the rules are properly suspended and this ordinance is properly before us. Is there any other questions, comments on this particular ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the ordinance is adopted, 7-0. Next item is a resolution to authorize overtime pay for the Prattville Police Department for parades, fun runs not to exceed the amount of $1,752.32. Councilman Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville supports the annual Spinner's Pumpkin Patch, and whereas this annual event is scheduled to be held October 22nd and 23rd of 2011, and whereas the Spinner's Great Pumpkin Race will be held October the 22nd, 2011, and whereas funds are needed to provide overtime pay for police officers to cover the run route and intersections for a period of approximately two hours, and whereas the approximate overtime cost will be $1,752.32 to include FICA workman's compensation and retirement. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that the funds not to exceed $1,752.32 are hereby authorized and approved, and said funds are to be made available from the general fund. So move, Mr. President.
Councilman Striplin has moved resolution number four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boes. If I put an order, this will be carried over to our next meeting unless the rules are suspended. Councilman Fink moves that we suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Looks like we had several seconds. Councilman Wood seconded that motion. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? The rules are suspended and this item is properly before us. Is there any discussion pertaining to this resolution? Councilman Miller?
Are you on, I know you've sent some emails around. There's been discussion amongst several of us and with you, and it's been sort of over some period of time as we've looked at budget issues. But, you know, there are a lot of fundraisers and community groups, and it seems like the fun runs and the 5Ks and more recently half marathons. I think we've got maybe one and another one planned, two different groups.
I only know of one.
But that's sort of the fundraiser, you know, of our time right now. And I just have, I guess, some concerns that we need to develop a policy so that both the community groups and the city and everybody sort of knows what the deal is. Because in the absence of that, at some point in the future, we could find ourselves, you know, with a number of requests that are not sustainable from a financial perspective. And so I guess I'm using this opportunity to challenge you to go ahead and sort of put that together and look at what some other cities are doing. Because I think that this is something that we're going to see, you know, more of in the future as these groups continue to try to do good work and support, you know, community activities, so.
I totally agree. Yeah, there's a lot of good work and good deeds that come out of these types of events. And, but it is something that does need to be addressed, and I have looked into that. I do have some information from other cities and look forward to working with the council on that in the very near future.
Okay, thank you.
For tonight, I do have something written up, if some I would like to accept it. I know normally the mayor's position doesn't deliver something to the council like this, but, and I am left-handed, so please excuse me.
I suggest that you pick out the councilmen you have the best relationship with and ask him to bring it forward. Councilman Fink?
If I can just talk to Tom's for just one second, Dr. Miller's comments. The mayor and I have discussed this and through leisure services. So I will be calling the leisure services committee to come up with a recommendation to the mayor or work in conjunction with the mayor on that. So he and I have had some discussions about this and what might be a proper fee to charge and so on and so forth to cover our costs, so.
Thank you, Councilman.
Which one other thing I do need to explain, since I've given the written document to them, is that when it was, I guess I misinterpreted the email that was sent to me about the dollar amount. I thought the dollar amount meant we needed to double what was already on the docket. Well, we needed to, what was meant was we needed to double the amount and then add it to what's on the docket. So instead of it being 3,000 or so, it is 5,000 plus. It is, it is, it is a cost of doing city business.
Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, there are several amendments here. Would you like to do them all at one time, or would you like to take them individually?
Let's defer to council on that. Should we group these together as one, Mr. McDowell, or should we address it?
I think the way we've written it, if you can just read it as one.
We can do it as one. Okay. All right, Mr. President, I make a motion that we amend line number three of the resolution. The amount of $1,752.32 will be amended to read $5,256.94. It would also say on line number three, for police department for parades/fun runs, it would also be amended to say "and football game." The next amendment would be on line number 14. At the end of, whereas the Spinner's Great Pumpkin Race will be held October 22nd, 2011, and the addition, the amendment would read, "and whereas the Prattville Jeff Davis Football Game will be held on October 22nd, 2011." And on line number 18, after the word intersection, would be amended to include "and to provide traffic control." The words for a period of approximately two hours would be deleted. And then on line number 20, the amount of $1,752.32 would be amended to say $5,256.94. Mr. President, I so move.
Mr. President, I made one typo on there. The football game is not on the 22nd, it's on the 21st. Sorry.
Mr. President, I made a mistake. It's on Friday, October the 21st, rather than 22nd.
All righty. Anything else that needs to be adjusted before we bring this before us?
No, sir.
Okay. You heard the amendment to this resolution brought forward by Councilman Argo. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion about the proposed amendment? Councilman Fink?
Yes, I believe you're going to need to also amend line 26 to reflect the $5,256.94. You missed that, Councilman Argo?
I did, thank you.
Yes, sir. The mayor and I both missed that one.
And I truly do apologize for bringing this up like I have, but then also giving it to you, Councilman Argo. You know, the shape that your voice is in, I should have went, and I truly apologize on that.
Let me remind you, Mayor, that you served on the council before you became mayor. You know better than this. And that's all I got to say about that.
Well, I will say that I'm going to go sit down.
Councilman Striplin?
Yes, sir. Mr. Argo, does that information you have give the number of hours that are estimated for these services?
No, sir. The resolution does not include that, but I have been part of a conversation where the estimated hours for the football game was four hours, if I remember correctly.
Any other questions of Mr. Argo about this proposed amendment? Councilman Boes?
Okay, so we amended, we're trying to amend it from 1,700 to 5,200 for four hours overtime for the police department?
It's four hours for the football game, two hours for spinners, for the run. So it's a total of six.
Okay, is it per person four hours or just four hours overtime? That's a lot of money for four hours of overtime. Yes, sir.
Chief?
On the spinners, it's approximately two hours per person.
Per person.
On the football game, it's approximately four hours per person.
Per person.
So you're taking that amount, you're doubling the amount of officers, and you're adding, instead of it being a two-hour event, total a six-hour event for twice the amount of officers.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Chief?
Councilman Wood, do you need to address the chief?
Yeah, just for clarification out, and maybe it will help. You talking about how many officers, so they, I think I got D-mail on it, but.
On the spinners, it's approximately 16 officers. On the football game, it's approximately 20.
20, okay.
However, we have about three of those that we put back reimbursement through the schools and myself and Captain Wattsworth their salaries. So that knocks us back down roughly about the same amount.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions pertaining to the amendment? Councilman Miller?
It's not for you. You can, actually, a question is, don't we also, is this a game we would be providing ambulance at?
Yes, sir. But we've trimmed that down along also with support staff, I guess, from the leisure services. I believe at one point in time, and don't hold me to this number, but I think we're actually having about eight city employees to work the football games through leisure services with overtime. Thinking a little bit outside the box, changing some ways that we have done things, adding some toilet paper holders. We've been able to cut in, pretty much in this game, if I'm not mistaken. We will not have any additional support staff from leisure services. And if I'm not mistaken, our paramedics that would be there with the ambulance will not be overtime either.
No, so we'll be utilizing the staff, some on comp time, and then a home-duty ambulance third out, standing by down there. No overtime.
What do you mean by some on comp time?
Some, we have an option, either take overtime or either take compensatory time. And if that's allowed, so a couple of staff members will take that in the provided time to help save money instead of taking the pay, which has been a common practice that I know of for 25 years here. But we've covered most of our ballgames with Commander Whaley working them and also Chief Johnson, which is salaried. So it really doesn't matter. And we'll stand by, third out ambulance, that can, what I'm talking about, that'd be a home-duty ambulance that'll stand by down there. And if we get busy, it'll catch a call and the engine company will roll down there to stand by. Everything we can to keep the overtime costs down.
And also, we've worked with the Board of Education as far as the cleanup, where the city used to have people staying there until midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning. With overtime, we have, the Board of Education is providing cleanup. And where we used to have just a few individual receptacles for people to throw their trash in, we have brought in the big garbage cans that some of the citizens in Prattville have. And out in District 1, the rural district there, the big roll-around garbage can. Anyway, that, we're putting those in strategic spots, leaving the lid open on those. We're finding that fewer items are dumped on the ground. So it's been a little bit of a culture change for the city, the county, you know, all the entities involved. entities involved, but I think it's actually going to be a, the citizens of Prattville are learned that, you know, don't throw it on the ground, throw it in the can. So, I think all in all, it's been a good program.
The hour's finished, thank you.
By all means, Councilman Boes.
I was going to tell you, Friday night, I'm at the PCEA and the EMCA game. After the game, it took us 20 minutes to clean the stadium, and it was like 20 parents that did it. And, yeah, it was amazing how little trash was actually left on the stadium or the stadium grounds.
Well, great.
Everything was in the garbage can. And that was because we got looking ahead and putting garbage cans everywhere and just, and the parents knew that we were going to clean it when we were done, so they made sure their kids threw it away, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, so I guess you can say they had a little bit of ownership in it. I heard that whenever the first game, and we revamped the program, there was some complaints on that, and, but I think that the people in the stands saw that citizens were having to pick it up instead of a hired person. They decided it wasn't that difficult to throw it in a trash can. So, I think it's been a good learning process, you know, for all of us, and it's helped save the city some money and teach, teaches all a thing or two. But if you will move along with this tonight, I certainly appreciate it. Even though I did have lunch earlier today, I'm getting hungry again.
Councilman Fink.
Yeah, just one last thing. I want to echo one thing that the mayor said there. The Leisure Services Committee actually worked with the mayor and the Board of Education and Superintendent Faulkner. Typically, in the past, we've spent anywhere from eight to $10,000 on a Friday night game, depending on the size of the game and the opponent. And through their help, they're cleaning the stadium, and they're doing a lot of in-kind services also. You know, we're actually backcharging them for some things, and that is why you are seeing a significant reduction in the amount of money that we have out of pocket. And at the end of the day, there's only so much, I feel like, you know, we can contract out that I feel reasonably comfortable with, and having police presence down at the stadium on a Friday night football game, to me, is absolutely critical, you know? And if, you know, sometimes, you know, the rivalry between two schools, you know, I've got a 17-year-old daughter, that if police presence wasn't down there, I would have a lot of concern over just general safety and welfare, not just her, but citizens in Prattville as a whole. So, we've made great strides in reducing that amount of cost that we have on a Friday night.
If I could, Mr. President?
Yes, Mayor.
I would like to echo what Councilman Fink just said, you know, it's, this is, I guess you can say, one way, a cost of doing business, you know, or Friday Night Lights, you know, I've said it, I think, to each and every one of you guys, where it's a football game, but it's also a social event. Somebody might beg to differ with me, but I don't know if the average person coming out of the football game can actually tell you what the score was. They might be able to tell you who won or lost, but I think it's more of a, of a social event, you know, for communities, and, you know, that's what we are supposed to be doing in providing services and trying to make the community one, and through Friday Night Lights, the Spinners' Pumpkin Patch, and just items like that, it is, it is what makes Prattville. And I'll end it on that.
Okay. Any other comments before we vote on the amendment?
I was going to call for a question.
Okay. Is everyone clear about the amendment to this resolution and, okay, all those in favor of the amendment to the resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is amended and properly before us. Is there any other, any further questions on the amended resolution? All those in favor of the amended resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? I see none, the amended resolution is approved and adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the demolition of structures at 138 Ninth Street. Councilman Boes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the Honorable Judge Fuller issued an order in the case of the City of Prattville versus Nora Fay Eppkins, ETA LCV-01-08-F on February 25, 2005, has, as it pertained to instructed local location at 138 Ninth Street, and whereas Judge Fuller ordered the defendant to post a $5,000 bond to bring the structure into compliance with the building codes prior to July 1, 2005, and whereas the defendant failed to bring the property into compliance in required time, whereas the Honorable Judge Fuller has issued a final order on October 21, 2010, authorizing the city to produce the demolition and the bond to release the city, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Prattville that the structure located at 138 Ninth Street are unsafe and publicly a nuisance that must be demolished as instructed by the Prattville Planning Department and the City Court Orders Two. The mayor is to authorize the instructed to use the funds received from the City Court to remove the unsafe structure at 138 Ninth Street. And Three, a contract is in the amount of $3,385 is awarded to Alvin Thomas Incorporated for the removal of the structure, with said funds being paid from the court bonds. I so move.
Councilman Boes has moved for adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Second by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Wood.
If you all would note on this particular item, this, I'm six years old, we've been dealing with this, it's just like those weedy and downy seed lots that we all talk about, so I would encourage you all to move forward. I would like to ask the Planning Department, Joel, what is the timeframe for having this done?
Mr. Wood, we have a, as you see in the resolution, we have a contract pending with Mr. Thomas. So, we have requested bids, and we have this project ready to go when y'all approve the resolution. So, we, I believe that contract has something in the neighborhood of 60 or 90 days to complete, but I can get you that exact information after the meeting.
If you would just email it to me, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Is there any other questions? I do have a question for our city attorney. Mr. McDowell?
Yes, sir.
This resolution and the next one authorize the expenditures of funds, and since we do not have a budget, do we need to suspend the rules on the next two, since we're obligating or spending funds?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. We will need a suspension of the rules, or this will have to carry over. Councilman Miller has moved for suspension of the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion about the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? I see none. Rules are suspended, and this resolution is properly before us. Is there any further discussion about this resolution? Councilman Argo.
Mr. Duke, the bond that the property owner was required to put up, the $5,000, and we're, we're expecting it to cost us approximately $3,400, what happens to the other 1,600?
Most likely, we may have to address that, but the city has significant legal fees in this, this matter, stretching over several fiscal years, and we're actually operating under a previous ordinance with this case. We have since changed over to a state law that's, as you see in the next resolution, that's how we are traveling with most of these cases, but I imagine that's just going to be returned to the general fund.
As my question, we get to retain the other 1,600. We do not have to refund that to the property owner?
I believe that's correct. If my recollection is correct, the court order was drafted so that that was the case.
That's what I thought, thank you.
That she forfeited the entire 5,000.
Good question. Any further questions on this particular resolution? Councilman Miller.
And I, we know the bond is good. Thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, resolution is adopted 7-0. Next item is a resolution to authorize the demolition of structures at 110 Seventh Street. Councilman Wood, will you, excuse me, introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas under the authority of Title XI, Chapter 53B of the Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended, Prattville Planning Department declared the structure at 110 Seventh Street to be unsafe and a public nuisance, whereas on August 5, 2011, the Prattville Planning Department ordered the demolition of the structure at 110 Seventh Street by September 20, 2011, and whereas the Prattville Planning Department's order was delivered by certified mail to the last known property owners and to all parties having interest in the property, and whereas no appeals to the Planning Department orders were received by the city clerk within the period required by Title XI, Chapter 53B Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the structure located at 110 Seventh Street is unsafe and a public nuisance that must be demolished as instructed by the Prattville Planning Department's orders. Be further resolved that the mayor is authorizing instructed to remove the unsafe structure at 110 Seventh Street, and shall present to the City Council with a detailed list of the cost of removal. Be further resolved that a contract in the amount of $1,985 is hereby awarded to Alvin Thomas Incorporated, and said funds are hereby authorized and approved, and said funds are to be made available from the general fund. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Councilman Wood has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Striplin. By point of order, this will carry over unless we suspend the rules. Is there? Councilman Fink moves that we suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Any discussion about the move to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, rules are suspended, and this resolution is properly before us. Is there any further discussion about this resolution? Councilman Argo.
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to make it very clear, I am not opposed to this resolution, and I will vote for it. However, I do have a slight problem, and that is, the previous resolution we'd been dealing with for six years, they were also required to put up a bond that will pay for the demolition. This one's coming out of the general fund. A lot of the things that we have discussed over the last several months, we have cut back on and everything else, but now we're about to spend $2,000 to tear down a building. I just, I don't see the rush, and like I said to Mr. Wood, I'm not opposed, I'm going to vote for it. I just, I don't understand the wisdom of bringing forward a resolution to tear down a structure when we have a lot of other needs we need to be dealing with first, but be that as it may, I'll, I'll support the body.
Any further discussion? Well, I do have a question, since you raised that, Councilman Argo. Why do we not have a bond on this? Mr. McDowell?
The previous case was actually taken to Circuit Court by Ms. Eppkins, and part of the, I guess, the deal that was worked out pending the demolition is, we said, fine, we'll give you the time to make all the repairs to the house, but we want you to put some money up front as good faith that you're actually going to be doing this. So, we made her put, well, the court, made her put $5,000 cash into, into the clerk's office, and then she had X amount of time to make her repairs. When the repairs weren't made, we went back to court, asked the judge to let us have those monies, which is what happened. So, in that case, it was a little different than what you have before you in this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions pertaining this resolution? Councilman Fink?
Yes, I guess, I'm not sure I am going to support this, Councilman Argo and Councilman Wood. Is there an opportunity for us, I know we've used the fire department in the past as a training exercise to take down a house, is there an opportunity for us to do this now and forego the $2,000 expense? And I am addressing that to Chief Brown.
Chief?
Right now, the way it's been dry, and a lot of restrictions have been placed on burning structures. Matter of fact, a lot of restrictions have been placed on our liability with our insurance injuring a firefighter. It's something I can look into and address it with the State Forestry. They handle that, and also the State Fire Marshal's Office to see if that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further questions or comments pertaining to this resolution? Can I just pop right up? Councilman Wood? Councilman Argo?
I was just going to say to Councilman Fink, if you're not going to support it, and you want to give Chief Brown time to look into it, I probably would second a motion to hold it.
Motion to hold.
Second.
Okay, that was quick. I have a motion by Councilman Fink to hold this resolution. Would you like to define a specific date?
Yes, is it, Chief Brown, is it unreasonable to have this back? The, is it, is it unreasonable to think that we could have an answer back by the first meeting in December? I would make a motion to hold till the first meeting in December, which is...
I got it.
Yes, we will. December 6.
December 6.
My second.
Councilman Argo has seconded that motion that we hold to December the 6. Is there any discussion about the motion to hold? Councilman Miller?
I would like to get Councilman Wood's perspective on that to help me decide whether or not to support the motion to hold, since it's in his district.
Councilman Wood, would you like to address that, or do you want to pass on it?
Certainly.
Certainly what? Are you going to address it, or are you going to pass?
Certainly, I would like to discuss it. And, Mr. Duke, will you come up for a moment? First of all, gentlemen, if, if you reflect back, we have various weedy lots, probably hundreds and thousands of them over the years, so, and if, if those constituents don't take care of them, the city has to take care of them. Situation happens to be a house here that we've been dealing with, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Duke, for over 10 years.
Off and on, yes, sir.
Off and on for 10 years. If any of you all would drive by Seventh Street and look at what we're dealing with, even with the restraints that we have on us financially right now, you would probably be inclined to, to vote on this one. It's actually almost laying on the ground. So, I would encourage you not to hold this, because we've been dealing with this over and over and over and over again. I understand the budget restraints as well as anybody, but when we, we're to the point where we can get this done, we all notice how difficult it is to get one of these down, and we have this opportunity. As a matter of fact, I tried to get the fire department to burn this particular house down, and they said, because it was so close to another one, that they felt that it was unsafe to do so, and I think, Chief Brown, if you remember, I, I think you were still there when I talked about doing this particular house.
Yeah, I believe we looked at a couple during that time, now that it jogs my memory.
And this is one of them, gentlemen, so I would encourage you to move forward if you want to hold it fine, but it's a nightmare and embarrassment to this city, been that way for 10 years now, would love to move forward. That's all I got to say, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, and I, I'm not arguing with Mr. Wood. I said I would support doing this, and I will, but however, the argument that he just made is not a true argument, and the argument is, when we have a weedy or downy lot, if the city ends up cleaning up that lot, a lien is placed against that property owner so that we recover what it costs us to cut the lot. There is no language in this resolution that allows the city to recover a cost. So, basically, what we're doing is, we're paying to take down a structure on private property. So, unless we want to add some language that gives us the opportunity to place a lien to place a lien on the property to recover the cost, then I would support that. But until then, I can't do that.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Wood.
Mr. Duke, can you answer that question? Because I don't believe we do these without a lien being placed on them.
Yes, sir. The procedure under Title XI 53B is that we will complete the demolition and we will return to you with a report of cost in which you will agree with that cost. There's a procedure by which the owner gets a chance to pay that cost. Otherwise, it then gets placed on as a tax lien on the property. So frankly, we haven't had to do that because mostly what happens is, once it gets to this point, if there's really an owner that we identify in recent memory, most of those have been taken down. So we had some several years ago. Now, I will be, if we're going to talk about complete information here, a lot of these properties are what we call air property, which means that it's difficult to determine who all the owners are, and they're difficult to sell. And so the likelihood that we will collect on some of those liens is a little bit doubtful. Or the time period might be several years. But we have a process to place a lien on the property.
And I appreciate that because it says in line four and in line 13, Title XI, Chapter 53B. But I would appreciate it from now on, when you bring these resolutions, that it clearly spells out that the taxpayer will not have to pay for the demolition of the property and that we will be able to recoup that cost, or at least we'll place a lien on the property. Just some explanation that we're not taking down private structures.
Mr. Chair, be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Councilman Bowes?
I actually had a chance to run by and look at this structure. And if that was in any one of our neighborhoods, it would have been down five years ago. It is a shame that it's taken this long to do it. And it's a shame we're talking about waiting on doing this. Because as he said, it's really close to another house. There's no way they're going to burn it. If they burn it, it's going to take down another house. Then we really got a problem. So I would urge the council to move forward tonight on this, please.
Any further discussion?
Counselor President, I know I'm an invited guest, but may I add my two cents?
Sure. Why not?
Thank you. I think I'm getting what you have, Mr. Argo. I've been by this house also. And in my humble opinion, it is way too close to other structures. You know, another mechanism is that maybe the city could push it down. But there again, there's also liability involved. Anytime you get out there on property and so close to property lines and so forth. The monies were brought up about the previous resolution, how that's going back to the general fund. I think that those dollars would be very well spent for this and go ahead and move forward with this. But as far as burning it, very good idea, but I don't think it's that practical in this scenario. The city utilizing forces to tear it down, I don't think would be very applicable in this scenario again. But just my invited guest opinion, move forward with it tonight.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, if I could come back, Chief Brown, you indicated to Councilman Wood that it did jog your memory and you do remember this structure.
We had several of them during the time, Mr. Fink. We did revitalize a couple of areas at that time. There was the Seventh Street home, and Mr. Wood is absolutely correct, was too close to that, and maybe some power lines. I have to just go look at it.
If you believe that's the case, then due to new information coming to my attention, I would withdraw my motion to hold.
There would probably be overtime involved also if we did it.
Well, now new information came to light again.
Councilman Fink, are you withdrawing your motion to hold?
Yes.
Would you withdraw or you second?
With all due respect to Councilman Fink, he can't withdraw unless I withdraw my second.
Okay.
I do. I withdraw my second.
You guys will step outside and then come back and let me know what's inside. All right.
If you might indulge me, if that lacks, if that takes away some vote that I may need from you in the future, don't support it.
We're digressing too far, gentlemen. Let's move forward. All right, the resolution is before us. Is there anything else we need to discuss about this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing no opposition, resolution is adopted, 7-0. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weedy lots to be a public nuisance and order their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67, the Code of Alabama 1975 is amended. Councilman Member, Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Set a public hearing to declare various weedy lots to be a public nuisance ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67, the Code of Alabama 1975 is amended. Whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determined the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. 107 East Bonanza Court, 325 Festival Drive, 108 Fleetwood Road, 108 Gray Drive, 115 Hillwood Drive, 119 Hillwood Drive, 113 Isom Street, 909 Wilbur Forest, 1111 Wright Street. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Prattville declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above listed addresses to be a public nuisance. Two, the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Tagga County or Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. And three, the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the City Council of the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 PM on November 15th, 2011, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller has moved for adoption of this resolution to set a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on the resolution to set a public hearing? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Councilman Fink, I believe you have a resolution to come from the floor.
Yes, I do. It's a resolution to authorize the issuance, execution, sale, and delivery of $1.5 million principal amount general obligation note of the City of Prattville and the payment thereof. If I can defer to council, we can just introduce this in this manner and not read all the pages. So moved.
Okay. Councilman Fink has moved for adoption of this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowes. For this resolution to be properly before us, since it came from the floor, the rules must be suspended. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules? Councilman Miller moves to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Is there a second to the move to suspend the rules?
I'll second.
Councilman Argo seconds the move to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspension of the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? It only takes one nay vote to kill the suspension. This will carry over into our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be November the 1st.
It's day, isn't it?
Pardon?
It's day.
No.
Oh, okay.
You just didn't suspend the rules. It's been introduced and second, so it carries over. It's all right. All right. At this time, we'll entertain comments and questions from the general public on any item of business that you'd like to bring before the council tonight. But before you do, a very important person to this community slipped in without me noting it, our state representative, Mr. Paul Beckman, who happens to live in the great District of District Five is here. Paul, it's great to see you. Thanks for being with us tonight. We want to keep you as the representative of all of Prattville. That being said, is there anything that any member of the public would like to bring before the council? Anything at all? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Aye. I'm Allison Gray. I live at 1698 Old Country Road. And at the last meeting, I got to be in my bonnet. There was a gentleman up here talking about the benefits package of the city employees. And I've done a little bit of homework. And I know, one thing I failed to find out, and I don't know if I can get the answer now or not, is I would like to know how many police officers and how many firemen we have lost to other cities since we've started making these cuts. Is it possible to find that out now? Or do I need to address that later?
I would suggest that you get with the mayor and the Human Resources Director. I don't know if we would be breaching any law by disclosing that information or not, but they would be able to tell you. I don't know for sure.
Okay. I did find out from Human Resources that it costs $47,480.05 to train a police officer where he's ready to put on the street by himself. It costs $22,219.30 to train a fireman or an EMT. It costs about $25,000 to train a paramedic. That's just to train them. That's not to keep them. I don't know how many we've trained and we've paid this kind of money to, to lose them to other cities. But it doesn't make sense to me that you would cut these benefits packages and lose these people when you've spent this kind of money to train them. So I said at the last meeting that if you have to keep the one cent sales tax, and I really liked the term that he used about turning the ship around. Oh, and Mr. Mayor, I'm so proud that somebody finally said that they would take a pay cut in administration. And I hope you gentlemen consider what Mr. Bowes recommended. If that'll help us keep the benefits package for the city employees, where we're not losing city employees to other cities, not just our firemen and our policemen and our paramedics, but other people as well. We like Prattville the way it is. We want to keep it that way. We like for people from Montgomery to come over here and shop because they feel safe. When they no longer feel safe, they won't shop over here, just like they stopped shopping in Montgomery. We don't want that to happen. So I want you all to really, really think about these cuts that you're making to these benefits packages. Thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Gray? Thank you so much. Is anyone else that would like to address the council on any item of business? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. Have any closing comments?
There we go. There again, I want to thank everybody with the Spinners Group, everything that they have done in the past and for in the future for our community. Thank you for everything and keep up the good work there. I hope to see everybody there this coming weekend. And then also, I mentioned earlier about the 28th Candy Walk downtown for our youngsters and also a movie afterwards. So hopefully we have a pretty good turnout for that. And I know this coming Friday, I'm going to Montgomery. We have a municipal training going over there. So I'm taking a class over there for that, starting Friday. And I know most everybody up here on the council has already been certified for that. I have not been busy over the last seven years and was not able to make it to the different areas that they had these schooling going on. So I am taking those advanced classes now. But anyway, thank you for the work that you guys have performed up here. And it took us a while for the few items we had on there. But like Doug Mosley said, we are moving in the right direction. The ship is turning around. And with some more due diligence, we're getting there. Thank you.
Councilman Striplin?
No, sir.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
No, sir.
Councilman Miller?
I just want to ask the Spinners, how many more tickets I'm going to have to buy in the raffle before I win that darn quilt?
Those tickets, you might have.
Councilman Bowes?
I just want to say, I really appreciate y'all's patience. We've been up here for an hour and a half. But to turn the ship around, what we've done up here tonight is we delve deep into this. When I first got on this council, everything just flew. No questions were asked. Nobody said anything. Nobody dared to question the mayor. And I appreciate these gentlemen up here willing to take their time. I appreciate you all sitting in the hard pews. We got the comfortable seats. Y'all are in the hard pews for an hour and a half. But this just represents a little bit of time out of what these men are doing. Because for every minute we spend up here, there's hours behind the scene. And I want to just commend everybody on the council for their time and commend you all for sticking in here for so long. Thank you all.
Councilman Fink?
No.
Okay. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, November the 1st, 6:00 PM, right here in the council chambers. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.